I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning and welcome to the May 24th Manyha County Commission meeting. I remind you to silence your cellphones. The meeting documents are on the end of the counter in the white folder. And Robert is in the front row. He has listening devices if you need that. We'll move on to routine business. Item number one is consider a motion to approve the agenda.
Approve the agenda. Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number two is approve the county commission minutes from April 17, 2016.
So move.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number three is bills to be paid in the amount of $705,357.48.
Pay the bills.
Motion is second.
Second.
Any comments?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Barth.
Today's bills include a little over $200,000 for armor correctional. And in the highway department, $211,000 for one payment to Bo's Construction. So basically, our bills are less than $400,000, less than $300,000, which, anyway.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to pay the bills. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number four is report. Item A is the Manyha County Juvenile Detention Center report for April 2016. And that is on file at the auditor's office. Item number five is personnel actions. Item A is consider a motion to approve routine personnel actions. Is there a motion?
Make that motion.
Motion is second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number six is application for abatement. There are none. Item number seven is notices and requests. Item A is authorize the county auditor to publish notice of a hearing for a retail on-off sale malt beverage license for Hunter's Point Shooting Complex located at 45743260th Street, Humboldt, South Dakota. Is there a motion?
Second.
Excuse me.
Is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number eight is planning and zoning notices. There are none. None. Item number nine is petition of compromise of lien. There are none. And next we have opportunity for public comment. If there's anyone who would like to speak to the commission on anything that is not on the agenda. And to keep your comments brief, please. Okay, we have one. Your name and your address, please.
Bob Colby, Sioux Falls. I'm gonna get my stopwatch going here because I don't want to, there we go. Anyhow, since there's no corporate memory in the group at the moment that goes back more than, what, 10 years, I do have the opportunity, or did have the opportunity, to talk to and listen to the county commission when they met over on this floor, just at the head of the stairs. You would go straight in and that was the county commission meeting room. At that time, Cliff Hanson was there, but he had the propensity to fall asleep. And they'd say, "Isn't that right, Cliff?" And he'd, "Yeah, yeah, yeah, yeah." And he'd wake up. And Nels Ospas was on that commission, as was Dick Flynn, one of the, one of the two best Irishmen to serve on the Manyha County Commission. And there was a few others that had gone through the commission bench here. Today is a day of memory. It's Robert Zimmerman's 75th birthday. Bobby Dylan. He didn't do too bad for a guy that mumbles. Early on in, the county commission was involved in the Wall Lake restoration process. That was an entertaining thing that, in the whole course of it, and it took five or six years, there were several, excuse me, there were several entities involved, five or six. The state had a couple with dirt and water. And there was the dredge crew and the Manyha County Conservation District and Manyha County Commission and homeowners. It was interesting. They took a million cubic yards of sediment out of Wall Lake. And it's a long story where all of it was placed, but it's over in that general area. It was an asset for the lake because it doesn't get as green as it used to because they've deepened the lake. One thing learned while being on the commission at that time is you can't fire a volunteer. We had five or six different entities and there was always one that was objecting to everything. And that led to the state getting out of the dredging business. It was an asset for a lot of people in the county, but not for some. Those of us that served on that committee. Shortly after, there was an oil spill up by Renner. It was a major one because it was 9,500 gallons, excuse me, 9,000, 9,500 barrels of product, which was, multiply that by 40. That's a lot of oil spill. One of the things that happened at that time, we had several other committees that get together. There was the state. The representative from the AG's office was Mark Barnett, now a judge. There was the dirt and water. There was the EPA. There was the Manyha County. There was the city. And we were advised that if we weren't careful, they would try to split the entities up and help us to fight with one another. We pushed for double walling the pipe that went under the Big Sioux River from the west bank to the east bank so that if there was a fracture in the pipeline, it would be contained within another pipe. This is where I developed distrust of a certain mayor of Sioux Falls who settled with Williams Pipeline and took the wind out of the sails of all the rest of the groups that were fighting for this double-walled pipe to protect the aquifer. That person is now sitting in peer. If we would have been successful, we would have less worry today because of at least fractures underneath the aquifer. We did, however, work on aquifer protection. And one of the big things, Brookings County was one of the first ones, and they did wellhead protection, which was a sphere of influence. It depended on the type of well and the distance from the well where you could not do certain things because the water would be contaminated from the percolation down. And they went 50 feet, 100 feet, 200 feet from a wellhead. Manyha County chose to do it over the entire aquifer. And we have a better water protection in Manyha County than, I think, any other county in the state of South Dakota. We're getting close to the end here for today. This will be, to be continued. We did have a big push to go and try to get the alcohol tax into, some of it, into the coffers of the counties in the state of South Dakota. And we will use that as to be continued. Thank you very much, and I hope you have a good day.
Thank you for the history lesson. Anyone else that would like to speak at public comment?
Madam Chair, I'd just like to say on the alcohol tax that I appreciate Commissioner Colby's comments, but history did not end when you retired from this board. And this year, we passed Senate Bill Two, which will actually give Manyha County $600,000 in alcohol money. And so incredible progress has been made. That's 600,000 more than the zero we were getting before. And while it's not enough, it's certainly an incredible breakthrough that we finally are getting some of those monies.
Thank you, Commissioner Barth. With that, we will go on to routine business. Item number nine is a public comment to consider rezoning of number 16-02 to rezone from A1 Agricultural District to the C Commercial District property legally described as the east 464 feet of the southeast quarter of Section 26 Township 101 Range North, excuse me, Township 101 North, Range 48 West of the 5th Principal Meridian, Manyha County, South Dakota, located southwest of intersection South Dakota Highway 42 and County Highway 111. Kevin Hookman, good morning, Kevin.
Morning. Kevin Hookman, County Planning Department. This rezoning request is to rezone the, what's showing here is the east 464 feet. And to make it short, except for the 15 feet of the described area, I'll give you the map here. This is the general location map. And the petitioner has also submitted a survey drawing of the requested area with the legal description on the survey. The property is located in Rowena at the intersection of Highway 42 and 483rd Avenue, approximately three miles east of Sioux Falls. The rezoning will take, rezone nine acres, or approximately nine acres, of the property and of the entire property. The remaining property will stay agricultural. And there are five existing eligibilities on that property. The property is within the Red Rock Corridor. That means that it has a separate plan, so to speak, that has been worked out with all the residents within about a one-mile span on either side of the highway in order to better allocate where things go in the Red Rock Corridor. In that Red Rock Corridor area, this, this area has been designated to be commercially zoned in the future. So this is, so to speak, fulfilling the corridor plan. This is also in a rural service area and envisioned 2035 comprehensive plan. The, at the last planning commission meeting, I'll go over some of the pictures. So here's some of the pictures. It's, it's bare land, has a fairly decent slope to it. It's along the highway there, and you can see how it's sloping down to the stop sign. And of the neighboring property. At the last planning commission meeting, there was, or the middle planning commission meeting, because this was heard three times. The second planning commission meeting that this was heard, there is a little concern by the neighboring property owners to the south about the lack of buffer regarding the commercial zoning district and their residential property to the south. The petitioner has worked with that property owner since then and has come up with a deal that they are going to be working out in the future, but involves us not rezoning the south 15 feet of the original request. And that's why there is a, a separate legal description that describes out that area without the 15 feet. And, I'll bring it back to that picture there, that map. The, ultimately, the planning commission recommended approval with unanimous vote. So, is there any questions?
A public hearing. Would the proponent like to speak on this project? Good morning. If you'd give your name and address, please.
Thank you. Jason Klein, 401 North Jeremy Circle. As Kevin mentioned, that 15-feet setback is a neighborly compromise. And just here to present myself for questions.
Okay. Is there any questions for Mr. Klein? I don't think so. Okay, thank you. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in opposition?
Madam Chair, I'd make a motion to approve, and then I have a comment.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Commissioner Barth, a comment.
We did actually postpone making a decision on this to allow the neighbors to confer a little longer. And originally, the neighbor talked to, the two parties talked to each other and there seemed to be no issue. But the, they didn't, it was a breezy discussion and the neighbor to the south didn't really focus on it when it was brought up. And Sam Assam, representing the property to the southeast related, you know, had a concern about this buffer. And they worked it out when we deferred action. And I asked the former opponent if he was worried about it, and he was happy. So this clearly should be approved.
I have a motion and a second to approve this rezoning. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. And it is very nice, when there's a public hearing, if they've worked it out before coming here. So we don't have to make a decision for them.
We gave them an extra month and it worked.
It worked out very well. Item number 11 is also a public hearing to consider application for a special events liquor license from TNT Entertainment LLC for a wedding on September 4, 2016, at Blue Haven Barn, a property legally described as Track Three, exception number one, Crowell Edition Southeast Section, excuse me, Crowell Edition Southeast One Quarter, Section 36 Township 101, Range 51, Wall Lake Township 46594, 268th Street. Cindy.
Thank you. The auditor's office received the application from TNT Entertainment. It's for a special event liquor license to serve alcohol beverages at Blue Haven Barn and Gardens, and that's their legal description that Cindy just read, during a wedding reception on September 4. The application has been reviewed by the Sheriff Department, State's Attorney's Office, and Planning and Zoning Department. There were no objections reported. It appears that there is not a representative from TNT here.
Okay.
But if you have any questions, I'll try to answer them. Otherwise, we're requesting approval of the special event license.
And we don't see anybody from TNT. Is there anyone speaking in opposition to this? No. So any questions for Cindy? For motion?
Move for approval, second.
Motion is second. Any comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number 12 is consider a motion to approve the Manyha County 2016-2017 malt beverage licenses renewal applications. Cindy Justman.
Well, it's time again to renew the malt beverage license and South Dakota farm wine license. And I'll read the list of the licenses that we have, applications that we have received. The Alibi for on-and-off-sale malt beverage, Baltic Corner, on-and-off-sale malt beverage. Bottoms Up, on-and-off-sale malt beverage. Buffalo Trading Post, on-and-off-sale malt beverage. Chasers Food &amp; Spirits, on-and-off-sale malt beverage. Crook's Gun Club, on-and-off-sale malt beverage. Friendly's at Baltic, on-and-off-sale malt beverage. Great Life and Rocky Run Golf Course, on-and-off malt beverage. I-90 Speedway, on-and-off malt beverage. Midway Service, on-and-off-sale malt beverage. Northern Links Golf Course, on-and-off-sale malt beverage. Pump &amp; Pack, on-and-off-sale malt beverage. The Renner Corner, on-and-off-sale malt beverage. The Riviera by Rocco's, on-and-off-sale malt beverage. State Line Casino, on-and-off-sale malt beverage. Straw Bell Winery, on-and-off-sale malt beverage. 38 Roadhouse, on-and-off-sale malt beverage. The Thompson Show Post 307, on-and-off-sale malt beverage. Tucker's Walk Vineyard, on-and-off-sale malt beverage. Ultimate Golf, on-and-off-sale malt beverage. Wild Water West, on-and-off-sale malt beverage. Wild Prairie Winery, on-and-off-sale malt beverage. WH Lion Fairgrounds, on-and-off-sale and South Dakota wine license. The Yogi Bear Camp Resort, on-and-off-sale and South Dakota wine. Uncle Ed's Specialty Meats, package off-sale malt beverage. And Wall Lake Oil Company, package off-sale malt beverage. The applications have all been, also been reviewed by the Sheriff's Department, Planning and Zoting, and State's Attorney's Office. And I received no objections or violations within the current licensing period. So we are requesting your approval of the applications for malt beverage and South Dakota farm wine license.
Any questions for Cindy? Is there a motion?
Move for approval, second.
Motion is second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number 13 is a briefing on the city, on the city of Del Rapids' proposed tax increment financing district number three. Good morning, Justin. If you would just name an address, please.
Yes, Justin Wyland. I'm the city administrator with the city of Del Rapids. Del Rapids City Hall is 302 East 4th Street. Again, I'm Justin Wyland, city administrator with the city of Del Rapids. And I'm here today to visit with you, update you at the request of Ms. Mueller, the plans for Del Rapids to establish our tax increment finance district number three. You can see the map is up on the screen. The city of Del Rapids is seeking to expand the size of a TIF district that we took initial steps to establish in the fall of 2015. That, that initial district, TIF district, it was actually just this lot number one that you see on the map, as well as Quartzsite Street, which runs east and west. So the Del Rapids Economic Development Corporation has sold this 10-acre piece parcel to a company called Midwest Fresh Logistics, which has started construction on a 20,000-square-foot facility that they will be distributing fresh produce throughout, throughout the region, 3, 4-state region. Since that time, this initial establishment in 2015, we've had increased interest in the lots that you see north of there and have some of those secured. So we are seeking to expand this district to also include those lots. What the TIF district will pay for is for the significant costs of the infrastructure that's required to get this industrial park going in Del Rapids. That is the Quartzsite Street that you see that runs east and west. There is no infrastructure there at the moment. That will have water and sewer, storm sewer, a concrete street, curb and gutter that will access off of Highway 115. And then if you're familiar with Del Rapids, the street that runs north and south is Garfield Avenue, and that's currently a gravel street. And we're looking to use some of the TIF proceeds to, to put a layer of asphalt overlay on that street to be able to access these properties and so they won't have a gravel surface. I guess from, from that perspective, you know, we, we would appreciate the, and we appreciate the commission's and the county's support, working with you on this. It's a positive project, not only for our community in Del Rapids, but for the county as a whole and an economic development perspective. So I would take any questions from the commission at this time. I think it's just good to provide an update to you on where we're at with this.
Okay. Commissioner Barth.
I just want to comment. Last night, we addressed a planning and zoning issue jointly with Del Rapids just to the south of Quartzsite Street. I don't know if we can scroll slightly up on this, but right there, that building that says Old 77 Bar &amp; Grill, it's outside of the city limits, but it was in our joint jurisdiction. And we agreed to a business going in there. But Justin, you're extending your water and sewer to include that property. Isn't that right, or?
They will, the utilities will be stubbed into that property.
Okay, so clearly, progress is being made and that's, that's good.
Additional questions? Commissioner Kelly.
On the, the original TIF was already approved. Is that, this must be part county, part city property?
We, we started the process of public hearings and went through that process, but we never finalized the process because, because we had additional interests. So we've kind of started the process over. That was actually our tax increment finance district number two. And what we're going to be doing, just to be clear, is we're erasing tax increment district number two and establishing a new TIF district number three.
What's the life of this TIF, 20 years?
15 at this point.
15?
Yep. The, the city is, is issuing a sales tax revenue bond to, of, I believe, $800,000 that will be subsidized through the, through our sales tax revenue and the TIF district proceeds.
And so the 15 million is also the, or the, I'm sorry, what'd you say the revenue bond was?
800,000.
The 800,000 is, is the amount of the TIF then? Is that correct?
The TIF will probably generate 600, and then the rest of it will be funded through sales tax on an annual basis. Sales tax will fill the gap on the, on our sales tax revenue bond loan.
Additional questions?
Nope.
Justin, I was there when they had the groundbreaking for that first business. It was a very cold rainy day. We ended up being inside instead of outside on the property. I thought it was, when I, this came across on my laptop, I was very excited to see that it is continuing to grow. And it's a great deal for not only Manyha County, but especially Del Rapids. So, thank you for the briefing.
Yep, thank you for your support.
Okay. That will go on to item number 14, which is authorize the chairman to sign professional services agreement between Manyha County and SEH Incorporated for construction administration services in the amount of $137,529 for reconstruction of structure 50-284-170, the Redwood Boulevard Bridge. DJ Boothby, good morning.
Good morning, commissioners. DJ Boothby, Highway Superintendent. This is the next agreement in a series of contracts and agreements that we've got for the Redwood Boulevard Project. Redwood Boulevard Bridge Replacement Project, as you know, is the northeast corner of the city of Brandon. And we have executed a contract with Swingin' Construction. They plan on starting next Tuesday, the 31st. And SEH has done the preliminary design, the final design for the project. And we're hoping to get them on board to do the construction administration for us. That's what this contract is for. It's an hourly contract, not, not to exceed $137,529. And I would entertain any questions that you have about the agreement.
Questions for DJ. Commissioner Barth.
So DJ, this, this expense is in addition to what the bid was on, on doing it. So we were 100 grand over on the bid. Is this an expected cost?
This is an expected and budgeted cost, yep.
Okay.
Yep.
And the bigger the project, the higher the consulting fee as well?
Generally speaking, that's true. We don't like to use a percentage of construction cost for these types of agreements. But we do use them as a rule of thumb to estimate what they might be. And then we look at the number of hours. We expect a consultant to be out on the project during the construction phase. And, and then we back calculate how much we would expect them to charge for that type of agreement.
Thank you.
Commissioner Kelly.
It's more of a comment, but, and correct me if I'm wrong on this, DJ, but this is a project that we originally had been led to believe would be under the state, the, the bridge fund money coming from the state of South Dakota. And that did not turn out because of a timing situation. We had bid the project, we had sent out RFPs, we had not, or proposals, but we had not signed the contract. We subsequently did not get the grant. And this commission and the highway department worked together to decide this bridge was important enough that we're going to do this out of our current highway funds. So I, I think it's important just to remember that we went ahead with this project anyway because we sensed it was very, it was, it was most important.
That's correct.
Okay. Is there a motion on this?
Move for approval.
I have a motion and a second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, DJs.
Thank you, commissioners.
Item number 15 is an issue of proclamation recognizing Tuesday, May 24, 2016, as the Police Reserve Day in Manyha County. Doug Bunker, good morning.
Good morning, commissioners. Doug Bunker, Office of Emergency Management. I'm before you this morning to ask for proclamation recognizing the police reserve unit that's attached to the Office of Emergency Management. As you know, Lynn and I supervise a number of volunteers through our office. We have a rescue team, a dive team, and the police reserves. And police reserves is a unit that I work very closely with. A while back, we did a little history digging and we discovered that the police reserve was first formed 50 years ago, in 1966, by then Civil Defense Director Joe Vanderloo. And since that time, they have continued to serve the citizens of the county and the city of Sioux Falls and all the other municipalities within the county. And we felt that this would be a good time to recognize the, the hard work that these volunteers provide for the county and all the work that they do for you, so.
Doug, you get to read the proclamation.
I get to read the proclamation. All right, there we go. I'll do my best. Whereas the Manyha County Police Reserve was first formed in 1966 by Manyha County Civil Defense Director Joe Vanderloo. And whereas in 2016 marks the 50th anniversary of the formation of the Manyha County Police Reserve. And whereas the volunteers of the Manyha County Police Reserve donate nearly 10,000 hours each year to the citizens of Manyha County. And whereas the Manyha County Police Reserve has aided many of its members to go on to career positions in many different law enforcement agencies. And whereas the Manyha County Police Reserve have assisted various law enforcement agencies within Manyha County at numerous events, such as the Sioux Empire Fair, Jazz Fest, Hot Harley Nights, Hot Summer Nights, the Parade of Lights, the St. Patrick's Day Parade, and countless others. And whereas the men and women of the Manyha County Police Reserve had responded to assist the many, the many man-made and natural disasters and emergencies in Manyha County and stand ready to do so whenever called upon. And whereas the members of the Manyha County Police Reserve stand ready to assist the law enforcement agencies within Manyha County to enforce state and local laws and to protect and serve its citizens. And now therefore, we, the Manyha County Commission, do hereby proclaim May 24 as Manyha, Manyha County Police Reserve Day in commemoration of the 50 years of dedicated service made by the volunteers of the Manyha County Police Reserve and its service to its people.
Any questions for Doug?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to proclaim this day. And I do have a question for Doug afterwards.
I have a motion and a second.
Doug, you guys are having a graduation, right, tomorrow?
Tomorrow night, we are swearing in our newest group of police reserve recruits. So at 7:00 PM and PM, and if any of the commissioners would care to attend, we would be honored to have you there.
God bless them.
Yeah. It would be interesting to know the number of people who have gone through this program and volunteered time to Minnehaha County, because you think of the money that has been saved over, at least for the county and the taxpayers over the last fifty years, is substantial. Commissioner Kelly?
On that same line, it, it's important to remember, this is saving taxpayers of, of Minnehaha County about a quarter million dollars every year, just on the city and, and police, what the reserve does for the city and county, and we thank you. We thank you.
They work a number of different details with this. They help the police department with a lot of their training, sheriff's office. They're available at, at a moment's notice, so if we call, we generally get a pretty good group of people to show up, and, and we get people from all walks of life. Since I've been here, we've had everything from an emergency room doctor, a Catholic priest, and everything in between, so it's, it's a huge group of people, and I can't tell, speak highly enough of their dedication and the work that they do. It's an honor to work with them.
You're going to introduce yours?
Yes, and this is Erica Blankenfeld. She's one of our reserve officers who was able to make it this morning, and we'd hope to have a few more, but again, they, they have to go out and put bread on the table, so they, they might be able to make it.
Thank you for coming.
She, she's not going to be visible standing over there. I think she should come up to the podium for a minute.
The standby dug, just to say, we do, we do have a TV camera here, and if Doug, if you would just introduce her on.
That's all. Erica Blankenfeld, and you've been with us since?
Five years now.
Five years now.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you. Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thanks, Doug.
Item number sixteen is the Minnehaha County Liaison Reports. Are there any reports?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Barth.
Couple of them. Well, one is, I see our museum director is here, and I have to say, I was, I didn't know about it in advance, but his efforts to recognize Civil War veterans and, and just veterans by identifying those unmarked graves in the cemetery, wow, outstanding. I, I sure do appreciate it, Bill, and I, I guess I might invite him up to say a word about it.
Did you have anything you wanted to say, Bill? I saw the report last night on Callahan TV, too. Excellent report, and it was like, here comes Bill walking across the cemetery, so, thank you.
Well, well, as you all are aware, history is, is my hobby as well as my profession, and many years ago, I got interested in listing all, all the Civil War veterans in the county, and there are three hundred and forty-seven approximately veterans that I've located so far in eighteen different cemeteries in Minnehaha County. And the biggest concentrations, there, there's some in Mount Pleasant, Woodlawn Cemetery, Del Rapids, Valley Springs, all have, Hartford has a big concentration. But, but a couple of years ago, Gary Conratty and I, Gary's on the Woodlawn Board, were talking about some of the veterans in Woodlawn Cemetery, and we got talking that there were two, one, one Civil War veteran and one Indian Wars veteran that didn't have a government marker, and so we decided we should do that, and I provided the cemetery with some research, and they applied to the federal government. The federal government provides free-of-cost markers for any veteran of any American war. And so the cemetery got them, and we were talking that the cemetery wanted to do a, a ceremony, and so dedicating those, and so that's this afternoon at four at Woodlawn Cemetery.
I think you'll have a beautiful day to do it, too.
Yep.
Thank you. Any additional liaison reports? Commissioner Barth?
Madam Chair, last night, we had a planning commission meeting down here, and our overflow was overflowing in the sense that we didn't have access to the overflow room, and here's a photograph from that meeting where I think we borrowed a bunch of chairs to go to that other room because the auditor was doing election training, but it was a little embarrassing to have this many folks standing, and you can't see them, but they were standing in the doorway and, and out by our bulletin board out there, and, you know, the fact that the election is coming up and, and we have to train people, it's something we should bear in mind, but we could have perhaps borrowed those chairs back and, you know, heck, have a row up front here even, but to have this many people standing is really unfortunate. Nobody cares what we do at this meeting, but people are fired up about planning and zoning.
Thank you, Commissioner Barth.
Now, I have one more. I had a fair board meeting this week. I just want to remind everyone that the Reb Fest is coming up, and that will be located at the Lions Fairgrounds, and that is June two through five. You can buy tickets online by going to the Sioux Empire Fair's website and buy your tickets in advance. You can buy them for a one-day event, or you can buy them for the whole entire time. And also, this went out in an email report to the commission, but I thought I would just elaborate on it a little bit, that we do have camping spots out at the Lions H Fairground, and with the pipeline going in, in our area, we're going to have between sixty and eighty campers parking out there for the summer through the end of October. These people are, are coming in as a group that will be putting the pipelines in, and they're, they're based out, or their, their main base for this area is in Harrisburg, so we have campsites in Harrisburg, Sioux Falls, Hartford, and as far away as Iowa that'll be driving here to work on it. We have, out at the fairgrounds, we have electrical and water hookups and a sewer line, but we're going to be extending that sewer line, the board passed this last week, to extend that existing sewer line that will include forty-four more campers that they can service that way, because otherwise, we, they were having to come out and drain these campers for them as part of their rental fee for the time they're there. All of those, those particular camping sites will be within the fenced area, and all of that expense will be paid for by revenue that will be generated from the people that will be camping there, and it turns out as being a revenue source for the unexpected, for the fair association, so they're quite excited about it, so. Any other liaison reports? Commissioner Benega?
After last month's building committee, we had conversations about some campus planning, if you will, conversations, and if there are experts in the field, and I was assigned or volunteered, I'm not sure which, to contact both of the hospitals about their planning of not only traffic flows for individuals, but also for pedestrians that are visiting the campus, automobiles, and obviously employee efficiencies, and they're, both of those institutions have experts on staff, and one of them did volunteer to at least talk a little bit about that conversation at some point in the future, so I think we have people in the community who are willing to help us with, I would say, professional campus planning, and I think that we would be wise to consider that option in the future.
And I have put that on our next building meeting agenda, so we will be discussing that. Okay. If there are no more liaison reports, is there any new business? Is there any old business? And we look for adjourning into executive session for contract negotiations, potential litigation, and personnel.
That's my motion, second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. We are adjourned.